Okay, so it looks like we're good to go. Thanks, everybody for coming out. The roads aren't too bad, but it's always a little sketchy. We will start with the, well, first of all, we'll start by, I'm just gonna say Russ is doing the minutes for us tonight. And I will appoint him as an official member for this meeting. And then we'll move on to the approval of draft minutes from February seventh. Does anyone have any? Corrections and I'll take care of the edits since Murray's not here, but you don't need to worry about it, Russ. I've already seen him.
I had no questions.
Anyone else?
Sir.
Make a motion to accept the draft minutes from February seventh.
And roll call vote, George?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Yes.
And that's unanimous. Thank you. So let's move on for public comment. Just nothing tonight. Okay, thank you. Um, old business. We'll start with the top branch. So I, we had at our last meeting Carol and Ivy come and speak to us. Um, I sent out an email with the two master plans that they had worked on that was Tuckton Borough and Middleton. So hopefully everyone had a chance to take a look at that. And there was also the email from Pam Kingston. Who had raised some questions. I would say that I, I met with Pam the following Monday after that meeting and she had done a lot of research, I think in the meantime and made a lot of good points and which we'll talk about more under the housing forum and the community engagement piece, but yeah, did anybody have any questions or comments about her email in particular? Thanks. Um, there was also an email I sent out from SWR PC. I just, after that last meeting, I did reach out to them again and said, has anything changed as far as their situation or would, would they maybe be able to work with us or did they have a timeframe? So we could at least factor that into our decision. And he basically said, no. And that we should take advantage of this opportunity to work with Carol and Ivy because they are really short-staffed and even if they were able to hire someone within the next month, it would take some time to get somebody up to speed to be able to really give us a quality consulting experience. So he recommended that we move forward. This, although he was sad to do that. Any comments or questions about his email? Yeah, can you use the microphone? I'm not sure if it's online.
Well, what I said was the fact of the email from the SWR CP was if someone else will do it, take advantage of it.
Thank you. Um, I also did reach out to Murray this afternoon to see what his thoughts were. I know he, he wanted another a couple of weeks to look at the materials. Um, and he did say he liked the two master plans that Ivy and Carol contributed to. Especially the front sections that documented public outreach. It sounds like they would follow a similar model for the needs analysis and I think that it would also define with the regulatory audit. I think it will be important that they reference the 2020 survey and not just reported reports from the charrette to avoid the concerns expressed in Pam Kingston's email. Uh, maybe involving a diverse set of residents in the needs analysis would help with that concern. So I think we're all on the same page as far as that. And he said he would, if he was here, he would have no concerns and he would vote to move forward with them. Obviously he's not here to vote, but I know he was. It was important for him to have input because he had asked for more time. So those were his comments. Does anybody else have any questions, concerns, or are we ready to vote? Do we wanna talk about that a little bit more?
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to say a few things. Uh, I think I just want it to be on the record that um, the townspeople know that us, the planning board, um, we, you know, obviously we're gonna move forward with these forums, housing forums. And Ivy and Carol both offered to be there uh, in some capacity at those forums. And I know there was some concern of how much involvement they would have. And so I, I, I think that, you know, it will be our job to make sure that we have the, conduct these forums in a way that people feel comfortable and don't feel that Carol and Ivy are running the show because it's really our forum, it's our town. They can certainly chime in if we ask or if residents ask them. But I, I, I think that was a concern I had heard. But that being said, um, I just wanna make sure that the word gets out that, for people that don't know that we don't make the law. Uh, we, after this process of going through forums and, and um, you know, help from Ivy and Carol with the grant, we'll probably propose something next March to be in the ballot, on the ballot, in the, uh, in the, and it'll be voted on by the town. So it's, I think a lot of people, it's a, you know, this conception, they don't understand that we, the board, we, there's not many things that we actually can vote on and certainly zoning. We can propose it, but we, it needs to, it needs to be voted on by the town. So, um, certainly we wouldn't prepare anything that we thought didn't have a chance. But it, but it can be voted out because that's how our democracy is set up. So I think just the fear, there's a lot of fear out there of, you know, the, the planning board's gonna just push this through, uh, whatever ideas they come up with, but that that's farthest thing from the truth and it takes the whole town to vote to pass it. I just wanna, wanted that on the record.
My meeting's being recorded, so I didn't go back. Maybe one.
Um, I agree. And I think the idea is we, we can't delay. I mean, we've got enough that's happened with the 2020 survey. We've got the charrette. Uh, it's been going on for a number of years now with the questions. So I think um, the professionalism of the two ladies is, is not undeniable. So I would agree to go forward too.
Um, I would also just add that I, I did share the concerns that were raised at the last meeting and in the email from Pam with Carol and Ivy and Ivy, you know, fully acknowledged that, you know, she comes with some um, negative press and some baggage and she's hired to do a job and that's the job that she will do based on the parameters that we set. She's not pushing her own agenda. She is a professional. And she understands that, um, and agrees that, um, anything that's proposed has to come from the town, not from her and or from Carol. Um, so that was important to hear and also, um, you know, to share with them so they're aware.
Well, I worked with Carol for years when I was on the planning board back in the eighties. And, uh, I thought she was very reliable resource. And it doesn't mean that we have to take the suggestions that she gives us, but I think we should listen to her and make our own decisions after that.
Yeah, I think that's the that's the whole point of hiring them is not to run the show, but they're consultants. They can help guide us or give us some information that that's their job to find out that information and then present it to us. And then we decide what parts we like and what we don't like.
Right. Right. And I stressed again, the, the importance of the community engagement piece and uh, they will be coming to the forum on Thursday just to listen, not to participate, but just to listen and get a sense of what's important to people in town. Um, they also, um, intended to come to town meeting and just set up a table outside, just if people have questions or concerns, they can ask them at that time. Um, and I told her about the forum that we talked about having in April. Um, so you know, they're fully prepared and committed to come to any opportunity they have to talk with residents um, and not just with the board. So. Any other? Questions or comments?
Somebody choosing to be annex the cap, uh, similar to what happened when we were in the room. I just asked them to identify themselves. So I said not to use.
Okay. Yes. Yes, because that caused some issues at our meeting last week.
So I haven't got a response.
Okay, thank you, Keith. I have that. The passwords were changed.
They were, that's what I'm thinking. So there's one minute people that have that.
Right. Okay, thank you. So, uh, just as information, um, if we do vote to move forward and hire them tonight, we would ask for a letter of intent from them and we would have to enter into some contracts uh, with them. That would be the next step in the process. And, uh, they both felt like coming to the next meeting to sort of go over with us how we would move forward from here. Just to come up with a plan. Um, and how they, you know, they've talked about surveys, they've talked about coming to events, that kind of thing. So all of those things, um, would need to happen and you know, I'm just, you know, think that it's important for them to come to the next meeting to start that process. So.
Are they getting paid for consulting?
They are. That's part of the grant is covering their income. Yeah. That's what, that's what the grant is for. And there's a, a contract, George, which I just got at four o'clock today between us and the grant or, um, committee, the administrator, um, which I haven't read the whole thing yet, um, but I would ask for a volunteer, someone else to look at it with me. And then I would also have, um, Peter Allen take a look at it because there's some um, payment plans that need to be sorted through. So I want him to be also comfortable with how that's all set up. So.
Would the select need to see that too?
Well, the planning board signs the contract, but in terms of I, I mean, it's not a bad idea to have the select board take a look at it for sure, because it is with the town. The contract, even though we're the, the, the party that's responsible. Yeah. So I don't know if George, if you wanna take a look at the contract with me, do you wanna work with me on the contract?
Sure.
Great. So I need a motion or one way or the other for Ivy and Carol?
Yeah, I, I guess, I mean, I, I can make the motion to move forward with Ivy Van and Carol Ogilvy. To be, what would be the wording? To be our?
Our consultants.
Consultants in our, um, investing Hampshire Housing Opportunity Grant Program.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. George?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Great. So I will let them know and I will invite them to the next meeting and ask them for their letter of commitment, not sorry, not letter of intent, letter of commitment, and that gets submitted to the grant committee as well. Just pass that to George, please. That's the contract I've received. Which I haven't read the whole thing, but I, I know there's something in there that needs to be corrected already. Um, thank you. Um, we can move on to the planning board clerk open position on the agenda. It is still open. Um, I had a small nibble, but I haven't heard back, so I'm, I don't know if that will pan out. So I guess I would just encourage everyone to keep spreading the word and we can do another post if we need to. Have, I don't know where it's fallen down in the news list on the website, but.
Can we refresh it on the website to come back?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. And also, I mean, we should think about putting it in the newspaper. Um, which we haven't, haven't done yet. I just put it up on the town website and did the e-glass because, you know, ideally it'd be somebody from Temple. I don't think I put it on the Facebook page.
Yeah, just about to suggest.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Maybe that's the next.
Facebook page.
Newspaper and Facebook page, both. Do, do we need to vote on that or is that just something?
We probably do need to vote because there's a cost associated with the newspaper. So you wanna make a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion that we, uh, run an ad, uh, on, uh, the Facebook page as well as in the local newspaper to advertise for the open clerk position for our planning board.
George?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I'll, uh, take care of that. Uh, next up, housing forum planning. Uh, Bruce, did you wanna give an update or I can, there was some comments from in Pam Kingston's email about that some ideas on that as well.
Yeah, it's a work in progress. I spoke with Jessica Hip, um, this afternoon. And she's willing and excited to work as a, as just a temple resident or as a member of the CAC um, with me, us, um, to try to come up with some ideas of how to, you know, get this off the ground. So we're gonna be in the next week or so.
Okay.
So that we're prepared, uh, with some sort of a plan uh, for that first Tuesday in April.
Okay.
And my hope would be that we'd be able to have something that we could support all the members of the planning board.
Sure.
To have their eyeballs, you know, so they can see it just case something jumps out that is important that's missing or
Okay.
shouldn't be there. But I, I think it's gonna be really like we had talked about.
Yeah.
Elementary.
Right.
You know, zoning 101, get the ball rolling. You know, probably not as, it more informal than you know, I think that's the way it's gonna go, but.
Yeah, and I think there may be questions that come up that we could go deeper on at a future forum.
Well, I was wondering, when, when you do the 101, is it worth pointing out the shortcomings that we've come across recently? Um, because that would then start the conversation, uh, going forward on why we're looking to do for the review of the regulations, I think. So as well as doing the review, as you do the review briefly for each section to actually describe, okay, this section talking about ADUs, as you know, and this, and then or. And so I think that would be a good time to do, um, to guide us into the second and third phase then.
Yeah, no, I, I, whatever, any planning board member that wants to forward any email to me, send me, drop me a note with something just to refresh my memory of some keynote things to, uh, include in the first, um, forum would be, would be helpful. Yeah.
Yeah. And so what came up from, um, Pam's email was just talked about the survey, um, that we did in 2020 and how there were a lot of um, responses that people wanted more information in order to take a position, um, on just one thing or another. And so that was one thing she suggested is just to look at that and see where, where we know that people don't know. Like the ADUs, I think was one of them, but there were others as well. So um, I guess I will forward that to you as well. It's up on the website right now on the temple website. It's on the planning board page. The survey on the, well, I think just the results actually. So I have to give you the question.
I have somewhere in my file.
Yeah, I know. I thought I tried handing, I did find it easily, but I live in the electronic version, so I'll send that electronic version as well. Or you can take this and use a magnifying glass.
Yeah.
That's, uh.
Yeah, that's.
Was that the link that Pam had?
I think she did have it in her email, although.
Well, this isn't too bad. I can read this. Can I have this copy?
Yes, you can.
And then the results are on, on the website.
Yes, if the link wasn't in her email, yep. Yeah, and it's on the town website as well. For anybody at home that wants to revisit that. And then also, um, some other things that I thought about is, um, looking at the charrette recommendations, maybe not in the first one, but maybe down the road. And the master plan, since we're gonna be updating that in particular, you know, the vision statement and population and housing sections that, you know, the ones that are identified in the grant, I think it'd be good to just go over them with residents that come to a public forum. So um, they know what we're looking at and what, why it needs to be updated.
And also what's in the current one.
What's in the current, right.
People might not have read the reading statement for that.
Right.
Again, a review of that in a similar way. We don't want to want.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yep. And then the other one I had written down was, um, the NFIP, but I think that's again, that's a later, the flood insurance program, that's later in the fall perhaps. Um, depending on how that moves through throughout the summer. Um, and so were you thinking, Bruce, of having maybe one form a month other than maybe the summer?
Uh, April, May and June.
April, May and June.
First, the first Tuesday of so it would be planning board meeting.
With a public forum.
With a public forum. So obviously if we had other businesses come before us, we're gonna have to figure out how we do that if we
Right.
do the forum secondary, you know, have a, if somebody comes through with a subdivision or
Right.
law and adjustment, they maybe
That's our priority.
Be a priority.
Would it be an idea to follow up with those where they survey for 2023? Uh, to complement what happened in 2020, because then the public forum would have brought up lots of questions, hopefully.
Yes.
Statements. So it'd be an ideal time, I think, to do another survey.
Right. So as part of the grant with the consultants, they'll be doing surveys. So I think that, you know, we can kind of put those together. And I did give Ivy and Carol a copy of the survey and of the survey results. So, so they know what we've done already as well. Um, so I think it's, yes, is the answer answer. Um, but I don't wanna send out like a survey every week, you know, I wanna try to. Yeah. Right, right.
So, uh, Keith, what I was thinking was for the, like, the first zoning 101, the first, um, forum was maybe some visual uh, things that will help for people to be able to see like, you know, what a what map five eighty looks like, uh, Hudson Road and what three acre lots look like and three to feet of frontage and you know, what that looks like from an aerial view, you know, people, I don't think they understand. Some people don't. It's not any fault of theirs. They just don't understand what three acres is or what 10 acres is, or what 300 feet of frontage is. So I think just even that simple of a thing would just help people like myself. I'm a visual person. Um, it'll help people understand. So maybe we could help put that together too. But I think Jessica has some good ideas in regards to that as well.
Great.
Yeah, she's excellent on the marketing side. So she'd be ideal. But I can help with any of the graphics, man, but yeah, I'll help whatever way I can.
Great.
I mean, I think it'd almost be worth like even just flagging out, like say on the common or something like what is an acre?
Hmm, that's a great idea.
To, so people can look and visualize like, oh, this is what one acre is.
Well, the funny part is, is that the common is about an acre.
Well, there you go.
Maybe a little less, but yeah, that, that is true.
So someone already did it when they put up the fence, I guess, so.
Is there any other questions, comments for Bruce about the housing forms? So, so Bruce, um, maybe you don't need to do this right now, but I think, uh, maybe for after the first March meeting, I think we wanna promote, start promoting pretty quickly that we're gonna be doing these and put out an announcement and we can also promote it at town meeting.
Yeah, great, great idea.
So people can get used to the idea that it's gonna be the first meeting of every month.
So you're thinking at town meeting? An, an announcement and then what other?
Well, I mean, we can, I can have. Well, I mean, I can, I can have something printed for Thursday, for this Thursday, if you want. Web page, yeah. Topics TBD after.
Yeah, I mean, well, Thursday, isn't Thursday the land land use, I mean, is that?
Yeah, I'm just thinking if people are.
Just just to get, because you have a captured audience.
Right.
I can't hurt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, it can just be a piece of paper, it doesn't have to be a. Big announcement.
Okay, yeah, so I mean, we're we're looking at the date of April. April.
April fourth.
Fourth. Yep.
Does that work for you?
April fourth, that's the first Tuesday in April. And.
May second.
And then May second and then June sixth.
Okay. Um and also just wanted to acknowledge also that Russ had sent an email out with um about ADU zoning. Which you can talk about it at one of the forums, but did you wanna say anything about that, Russ?
Um it's just. I end up working in a lot of different towns. And yeah, I work with a lot of different towns and uh just recently um. Uh two people actually now in West Malian have asked me, so they've sent me West Malians regulations and um. Some of the things that we had discussed here were sort of simply spelled out in those regulations. The, instead of having percentages, for instance, I, they had a minimum maximum. Of building size and the uh everything in Westland has to be done by special exception. And. For me, I liked that when I was on the zoning board, I like that, because I feel like the planning board is sort of regulatory. And the zoning board is judiciary, so. If somebody comes with us and they meet all the requirements. You kind of hard pressed to tell them no, you're gonna have to really good reason or else you'll open yourself up. The zoning board, however, can listen to everybody in the audience, says, you know, this is ruining my way of life, everything is wrong about this. And they have some latitude to say yes or no, because the people are asking for something. It's not necessarily in the rules. It's totally permitted, and so. That's why I liked uh what West Malian was doing with the the special exception part of it. And then the last one uh that I. Kind of thought we had talked about um. How do we know that people are gonna be living there, owner occupied? And the the two parts that. I thought the one that they just say you have to uh be owner occupied, but then we question what happens when somebody sells. And in West Malian, what they do is they need a certificate of occupancy. If you buy a place that has an ADU, you have to get a certificate of occupancy that says you live there. And that you will continue to use as ADU as an ADU. And that kind of, it just puts it on record, yeah, I know everybody's talked about the how are we gonna enforce all of this and.
Oh, you mean instead of subdividing or selling?
Yeah, yeah, so so yeah, say like. No. I sold my house and I had an ADU in the on the back and you buy it. If you wanna continue to use the ADU, you have to get a uh CO that says. You're gonna live there and I'm gonna use this. And it just, it's part of the whole building permit taking process too and. So I, tho- those are just some things I gleaned off this one, I I keep finding out, you know. Apparently now, a lot of people, a lot of towns are. Sort of progressed that, let's let's do ADUs. And so people keep asking me about, hey, can you do this, because what I ended up doing is doing their septic system. Uh everyone needs either a septic system or maybe one on file that if there's fail, and so that's how I get involved usually. Or building setbacks if they're adding on or something. So I I just forwarded this, I thought this was just one that had some good ideas and I thought maybe anytime I run across them, I'll just. We can make the goals, yeah, what we like and what we don't.
Done to them for future conversations. Thank you, thank you, Russ.
Yep.
Okay, so uh let's see, we're moving right along here, um the NFIP, uh. I think we wait until after town meeting to. Uh schedule having somebody come to talk to the planning board, so that if there's. A new member, that new member has the opportunity to ask questions and get up to speed. Um that's my thought, you can disagree if you want.
Makes sense.
Uh driveway regulations, I did check back with Murray this week and he said he's got it all on his head, he just hasn't put it on paper yet, so. Um and he's sick this week, so um I don't. I don't know if we'll make it on to the next meeting, but I'll keep asking him. Um again, tax map updates, that's an after-town meeting because it's dependent on the budget getting approved. And I have not gotten an update on the natural resources inventory.
That would be the CONCON?
Yes, that's the CONCON. They had gotten a draft report, but um I don't think they've gotten a final version yet. And they should be scheduling. Some sort of public forum to share the results at some point. Later this year, I think. Uh I don't have anything on any updates on the next three, they had come off of the last agenda just for space issues, but I didn't want them to fall by the wayside. So I just added them back, and that's the town office filing. Uh reformatting the zoning ordinance and up making sure the webpage is up to date, and again, that's probably an after-town meeting thing. Um just for that third one. Um but we do need to get that zoning document updated.
My thought on that is rather than concerned ourselves too much on that, let's wait for the full review. Um that we're having going forward and use that document as the basis. Because then the changes can be accepted at the same time as any different difference, uh differences or any additions sort of added into that. Because it wouldn't hurt just to use that as the basis.
I think the issue is it's, you can't search on the document right now, they're not there.
No, I'm saying, but no, going forward. Um for when we do go for the review, use this document instead of the current one.
Okay, so but the one that's, I guess the issue is the one that's on the website right now cannot be searched by somebody that's looking.
Yeah.
So how can we get that version to a point where it can be searched?
Oh, it's already done.
Oh.
That's done and like we'd got that and I think Bruce was reviewing it at one time.
Okay.
I say, let's not waste any more time on that because it's a laborious task.
Okay.
Because as the review will take place and additions or changes will be made to this zoning ordinance later.
Sure.
Instead of using the old document that you can't search. Use the new document because then we got reason to then recheck it all the way through and it doesn't matter then if there's minor changes cosmetically.
Cosmetic changes, yeah.
Because then it's gonna be reviewed and approved. Along with everything else in there, so I think we just hold it. And use it as the uh uh document to for the modification.
Okay. Okay. Um I don't have anything on upcoming webinars and conferences, other than I think I sent out the save the date for the April conference, but. The registration's not open yet. And then um. Our new uh books are available at SWR PC and I wondered if anyone was heading out to Keene in the next week.
Okay. I usually grab them.
Can you grab them?
Yeah.
Um I, they did ask that you just call first, so they'll get them ready. Because I think we we got quite a few and they're not all for the planning board, I think the ZBA has copy and CONCON has a copy as well.
Yeah, we'll be going out to the Hundred Nights uh place as well in Keen, so you know, one of us can actually do that.
Well, you guys can.
Yeah.
Coordinate, I don't know.
If you wanna grab them, that's fine.
I I don't know when we're going yet, um but.
Oh, you don't know to Hundred Nights?
Yeah.
I see.
But if we are going out that way, I'll let you know.
So are you going to Keene, like in the next couple days?
Yeah, I might be, um.
Okay.
I can, my guys are going tomorrow.
Oh.
We're working in Keene every day, that's.
Grab them, you know the offices.
Yeah, tell them, hey, before you come home, go there.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's my, that's my night for volunteering.
Yeah, so if you could just call them first and tell them, something, you know, who's coming in to pick them up.
I've got some new business, I would like to ask. If the person who's using the annex account can identify themselves, because we need to try and correct this. Because of this technical i- technical issue it can cause going forward if we don't. So can whoever's using the annex account, please identify yourself?
You have to ask them to unmute perhaps, or is there a chat?
Yeah, I've already put it in the chat. Hello, annex, can you respond, please?
They're shy.
Because uh that's why I think what happened was, we had actually got, uh we got muted at the last meeting at the CAC. Because whoever used the account logged in thought they're muting themselves, but they muted the actual committee meeting.
Okay, well, it looks like they are not.
Not responding, yeah.
Responding, so. We're we're sure it's not a Zoom thing, right?
Actually, they've disconnected. I think, oh no.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. I'll check, I'll check with Bill, uh because he'll know who's got the current password.
Great, thank you. Is there any other new business? This might be a record for us.
Pretty good. George, you gonna do it?
I'm gonna try to attend this conference, April twenty-nine.
Great. It's online, it's it's not in person, so. Uh yeah, that's always helpful.
I just have to remind myself.
I'll remind you again at another meeting. Once the registration is open, uh you know, I'll let everybody know.
You wanna make the motion?
For what?
To adjourn?
We've covered everything on the agenda.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, meeting adjourned, thank you. Thank you, Keith, for doing the Zoom for us.